Something in the book.
Well, I don't know. One of my waters. Well, if this is why I'm here, so I'm saying, I said, I use it too. So, I need to see your guy. So she called me. And I wish I'd turned around and said, now, can I get my two boxes?
Yeah. Yeah.
All they did was do is. This is for.
Yeah, I was.
Playing out all.
The chairman. No, I doubt it. I can't imagine. He's only thirty-eight. I really doubt it. Maybe in the train back. I think he's still.
He should be this. Water. Man water. What they changed on the stuff.
I'll say he would do.
It's okay. I've never.
Yeah.
I've seen.
Right. We get enough. We've worked that.
Yeah. That of the book is just talking about Main Street. It ain't saying. Is that about campus?
Yes, they both. Only when they get away.
The book we're talking about. Main Street.
Yeah. Oh, is that the way? The bell's a ring. I think that is right. I think I could run a strike. I'll cover him. Always misses this day. Murder trial.
Manny, will you take a roll call, please?
Bob Richards?
Yes.
Kent Miller?
Yes.
Ruth Brown?
Yes.
Tony Gingler?
Yes.
Matt Oddie?
Yes.
Lloyd Luttrell?
President.
Robert Peterson? Shirley Mabel?
Do we all stand? Somebody wants to say prayer?
Most gracious, I think, Father, once again, we come here this evening to discuss the business of the city of Beloit. And we ask, Father, to give us the guidance and direction. We need to make the decisions that need to be made. Keep us safe. We want to thank you for the soldiers that are protecting us here and abroad. Keep them safe. Be with our government officials on a national, state, and the local level as we sit here. Send Jesus. Amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First time, please, I'm going to ask everybody to silence their cell phones. If they choose not to, they can read the media. Okay. Lloyd, do you have anything to add?
I don't think.
Very impressive parade considering the weather. Very well, having a good time. Very nice.
Thank you, Martin. Brian.
Well, as always, a big thanks to the V F P. They're impressive what they do. I just got a kind of a comical thing. I was in a store the other day and I heard a guy at the counter bemoaning our railroad crossing. And he said, I tell you what you need to do. You need to get every city councilman to go down there and drive across the railroad tracks every day. And so I kind of stepped around the corner and I said, well, we're well aware of what's going on. And I said, if you can get the railroad off square one, we'll be glad to accept your ideas. But he was from a town west of here. But that does show you what effects things have on your town, you know. You remember those things. But it was just kind of comical.
No, this might have been more weather today.
Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Glenn, do you have anything at this time?
I do. I've got a couple of things. You'll notice in your packet that we did receive word from the state that we did get funded with our Safe Route School Grant. So, thanks to all those people who worked on that again, regional planning or aware group and all that kind of stuff. So, anyway, another step forward for us. You also notice that twenty-fifth of November, we're going to have a conference of plan presented to the Planning Commission. That'll take place here on the twenty-fifth. And we do have a date for our annual Christmas party. That'll be December twentieth. I believe that's a Saturday. We'll be down under, start at six, and then there at seven and all that. Railroad crossings, we of course have been working on that. We have a temporary end there, as Bob had mentioned, and they're planning on the spring coming up with that. Did have a question. We did get questions about stop signs there. They did put up stop signs. We can, basically, the railroad has the right to do that. They're right of way. They can't put stop signs. And we can enforce that. That is an enforceable stop sign up there. So, thanks to our city attorney for doing a little research on that. That's something that I didn't know off the top of my head because that's a little beyond my knowledge on that. But anyway, that is an enforceable stop sign that they had put on there. And that's actually what they put up. They didn't tell us they were going to do that. So, anyway, you also notice expansion projects are moving along. Sonic has had, I think, final inspection from the city today on their project. And our general will be moving on shortly. And, you know, there's a big blank spot where Casey's used to be on the east side. They've leveled that all off there. And we've been working with them on all the utility side and all the permits and all that for the past couple of months. So they'll continue to move ahead on that. And have we had some news, Heather, or speaker, about the housing grant, a meeting coming up?
I do. I just wanted to tell you guys when the meeting was. So, we are still, this is for the housing demo and rehab. And the housing plan that the Housing Board set in was approved. And so we will have a public meeting. It's next Monday, November twenty-fourth at seven. And it's here in this building. It's downstairs. I did mail things to all the pre-applications. We mailed letters to all the pre-apps. And then we distributed letters or distributed signs around town. We've put it in the radio, on the radio, hopefully in the newspaper. So hopefully, the word is out. So if you still have people that have contacted you that are interested in it, that is the day that we will hand out applications. So, not until that date can anyone pick up an application.
Heather, what was the final number on pre-apps? Remember?
Probably fifty, fifty or sixty. A lot, a lot.
Now, this is that first four hundred thousand, is that correct?
Yep. Yeah, this is that first four hundred thousand that we've already been awarded.
Still appealing the five hundred thousand that we've applied for out of order?
Unfortunately, that's a dead horse.
Okay.
That stinks. But it's gone. It's gone. They just made that one way too difficult on a state level for us to do.
Okay.
We felt like we did everything we could to push that forward, but it just wasn't fair. So.
Do we know how much that we're getting on that grant for the Safe Routes?
I think it's two hundred thousand.
We'll get the full amount because it says, all states will receive up to.
Yeah. I believe that's what they're doing for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing else? Another public comment? So we want to send agenda for the last city council meetings and appropriations, whatever the questions or comments.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Bob Richards and seconded by Ken Richards.
Ken.
Okay, no.
Brothers.
Okay, I've been out. Okay, Manny, would you offer a roll call, please, or vote, please?
Brown?
Yep.
Gingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
There's been warnings. We want the resolution, resolution twenty fourteen dash fifteen, or nineteen, notes of public hearing for street improvements in North Campus. Anybody have any comments, anything?
I have a question. Does it make a difference that in two places in this resolution, or one place in the resolution, one place in Exhibit A, that says, talks about Block Six? And in Section C, in Exhibit A, it excludes Block Six?
You're correct. Block Six is a part of the Cooper subdivision, which this is not, this doesn't cover that. So that's correct there in the resolution. It would have to read one, two, three, four, five, seven, and eight, which does not include six and nine.
Okay, so it needs to be corrected, then in Exhibit Eight also?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. This is, just to explain this a little bit more, this is your east side of North Campus that Stuart talked about last time. This is just the first step in the process. We'll come back with another resolution at the next meeting, which will be a public hearing where public will have a chance to come in and comment on this if they wish. And then at that time, you would vote on a resolution of whether to actually move forward. This is simply setting that public hearing is all you're doing right now. So.
I didn't hear a motion.
I'm going to accept it. We approve the resolution twenty fourteen, not with that correction. Yeah, with that correction.
First by Bob Richards and seconded by Matt Oddie. We accept the resolution twenty fourteen dash nineteen, notes of public hearing for streets of grievance in North Campus. Manny, would you take a roll call? Vote, please.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Moving on to formal action. Any comment or any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the lower bid from Carrickland with an amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Seconded. It's been moved by Matt Oddie. We accept the bid from Carrickland, and I seconded. Manny, would you have, do a roll call vote, please?
Just chairman, you can second.
You can do yays and nays.
Just on order there, you can't second. You're chairman of the meeting, so you can't. You can't motion or second.
Are you kidding me? I will.
He did that. You can still vote. You can still vote, but you can't, you can't vote. You're a senator. Sorry. So make that, before you went too far.
Okay. Lloyd, seconded. Manny, would you offer a roll call vote, please?
I can, but we normally do yays and nays. Is that okay with you, or?
I'd rather go the roll call, rest of the way.
All right. Let's see. Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Moving on to formal action.
Any comment or any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the lower bid from Carrickland with an amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Seconded. It's been moved by Matt Oddie. We accept the bid from Carrickland, and I seconded. Manny, would you have, do a roll call vote, please?
Just chairman, you can second.
You can do yays and nays.
Just on order there, you can't second. You're chairman of the meeting, so you can't. You can't motion or second.
Are you kidding me? I will.
He did that. You can still vote. You can still vote, but you can't, you can't vote. You're a senator. All right. So make that, before you went too far.
Okay. Lloyd, seconded. Manny, would you offer a roll call vote, please?
I can, but we normally do yays and nays. Is that okay with you, or?
I'd rather go the roll call, rest of the way.
All right. Let's see. Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Moving on to the coal replacement in Hale Garden bid. Royal Spring Service for sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion?
It's a move.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilman Richards, seconded by Councilman Miller. We accept the bid for Royal Spring Services for sixteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Manny, roll call vote, please.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
Moving forward. We're going to the Capitol Building, Watson Sons Plumbing for six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Any questions or any comments?
It's a move.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilman Richards, seconded by Matt Oddie. We accept the bid from Watson Sons Plumbing for six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Manny, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Richard?
Yes.
Gingler?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Brown?
Yep.
Oddie?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Moving forward. We're going to Masonry Bid. That's four straight.
Four straight.
Representative City Council approved the Masonry Bid for Central Contract in an amount of forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Nope. That was us.
Those are bids. This is part of that grant right here.
Yes, this is all the downtown improvement grant. Remember, we had the windows on the first part, and this is the second part. This is the masonry that goes along with it. So it's all grant money, but the match is by the local businesses who own a building or involved in that. So there's no actual.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Richards. We accept the bid of forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the Masonry Bid. All of them.
Before we move on to the question, is this the bid from Central Contract in line with what the grant applicants want? Or is this our decision?
Yes, I mean, this is what you, they have actually a committee that meets and recommends, just like the day.
It was right.
So it's their, yeah, so that's their recommendation to us, and I believe it meets all your specs and everything, so.
Yeah, Mandy has those in her office, but it perfectly meets what needs to be done, so.
Manny, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yep.
Gingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Moving forward, going to the. Representative Council approved the engineering agreement with Swabian for preparing plans for East Maine and North Campus Streets in an amount of, to not exceed two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Any comments, any discussion?
The only correction on that is Stuart's already has a contract on the North Campus and he's still working on it. So this actually will just be all East Maine Street, what he's looking at here.
The whole two hundred and thirty thousand?
Correct. That's for both the engineering and the construction observation and construction engineering. So it really has nothing to do with North Campus.
But that's going to keep us in line with the total amount we discussed.
Right, the estimate that he provided, I think, two meetings ago.
Those, the numbers are directly off of the cost estimates that have been prepared and, and adjusted. There's been one revision to that cost estimate. But the most recent cost estimate that you have reflects the numbers that are part of that agreement.
Okay.
Good.
More comments, questions?
When were we planning on going forward with this? Was it next year or? Is that the meeting we're going to?
Well, I thought it was next year.
Fifteen. Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Fifteen, I did.
Well, I guess the timeline would be, once we approve this, then you go to work and then get bid documents and do your usual work on this.
The design will take roughly nine months to put together. And, and then we would advertise like we normally do and construction, you know, we will talk to the city about the timing of construction, but probably four or five month construction period, something along those lines. We have not put firm numbers to the construction timeline. But realistically, construction would take place in late two thousand and fifteen or early, and/or early two thousand sixteen.
Probably at best, like a September, October start of day.
At best. That's correct.
I've got a question. I remember talking about this a year ago, and I thought we were going to move forward and do something in two thousand and fifteen, a year ago.
Well, we're moving into design with this agreement.
Well, I thought that was already done a year ago.
That was just the cost estimate.
That's correct.
Yeah. That's, that's what we discussed. That was, yeah. We had them do a projected estimate of cost on, it was just East Maine.
Correct.
I move that we approve the engineering agreement with Swabian. I'll second it.
It's been, uh, motion, uh, first by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Richards. We accept the bid, not to exceed over two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars from Swabian. Manny, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Yep.
Gingler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Oddie?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Recommend the Council to approve the attached financial services agreement with Piper, Jeffrey, and company for providing financial services for issuing general obligation bonds and temporary notes. Any additional discussion?
Question?
I guess, it's a little bit confusing here.
The financing will be for both projects. I mean, we keep saying both in here, but we back off to either the one or the other. So I would just like to know that.
Yeah, we're confusing two projects, I think, a lot, so we kind of need to clear that. And the other part that's a little bit more complicated is that, well, Dustin's here tonight. He can probably explain this a little better than I can. For those who don't know him, Dustin Avery is here for Piper, representing Piper Jeffrey. And he's recommending a little different financing here. We go with the temporary notes, if you don't, if you haven't dealt with that before. And the reason is because we don't know exactly, we do have cost estimates, we don't know exactly if they've bid the projects yet. We don't know exactly what we're going to cost. So what Dustin's proposing to do, temporary financing, I think would be a one year or.
Yeah, so.
It's supposed to be a year for, for the temporary. And then once that project's over, then you do the permanent, long-term financing on that. So we are talking about both projects here. And he would be serving as financial advisor on both of those.
On both of them, and just one note?
Uh, no, I don't know how you would, I think it's actually.
Notes and the bonds.
Okay, all right.
Right, so it's, if it's helpful, I can just kind of walk through the kind of plan, the plans and the process. That's helpful.
It's like you got something to hand out, too, so.
Yeah.
All right.
May help kind of, kind of put all this together in terms of process and financing plan, et cetera. Let's give these a passer on. Just ready to downwind. There's three of us. Well, it's appreciated being here again. And it's been like a year or so since we've talked to the council, you know, Dustin Avery with Piper Jeffrey. And I, so I think the financing plan, again, relates to kind of, well, two projects, right? East Maine project as well as the North Campus project. The North Campus project, a portion of that project is going to be special assessed to the properties benefited by the improvements. And the other portion of the project is going to be paid for by city large. So I think the key is, is that you have construction estimates. You really don't know your final, obviously, final project cost until you've completed your construction of those improvements, which would probably be the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, is what it sounds. And so what typically cities do is they'll do what's called general obligation temporary notes, which is raised under the term for construction financing. We do a temporary note, you have funds for construction, at the conclusion of construction, then you evaluate, are we under budget, are we over budget? And then you go to bonds at that point in time, long-term bonds. And I believe, two meetings ago, the city reviewed various amortization schedules related to financings of projects over a long-term basis. So at that time, you go to long-term bonds, projects that should be special assessed will be special assessed. The projects that are state large projects will be part of your budgets going forward. So, so from a planning perspective, these projects from a budgetary matter will impact your, it'll be your two thousand and seventeen budget that's being prepared in two thousand and sixteen is the first budget you'll be working with and making sure you're, you're budgeting appropriate dollars, either via property tax or sales tax for repayment of the bonds for these projects. So I think that, from a timing perspective, is that, answer some of those questions with respect to the construction financing and the bonds. And the pack you have in front of you is really just some of the numbers. And again, I think these are fairly prevalent, where I know that there's some, there's some estimates related to the North Campus project. I believe costs are almost firm on East Maine, but there may be some, some other items that are being reviewed in terms of right-of-way costs, et cetera. And so what these numbers show, share with you is, okay, if you're doing a temporary and bond issue, it'll be really the second page of that analysis. You'll see what's called sources and uses of funds. So you can see there, there's the project fund, under the uses section, you have a project fund deposits. And so right now, the estimated cost for North Campus is right around two million, two thirty. The estimated cost for East Maine project is one point seven million. Now, so you have various costs related to issuing the temporary notes. We're also capitalizing the interest payments. So obviously during construction, you don't want to have, you're not budgeting for any interest payments over construction. So within the temporary note, we're capitalizing the interest payments to make sure there's no budgetary impact to the city or the construction of the projects. So at this point in time, to fund, to fund the projects and to pay the cost of issuance of the temporary notes, the estimated par amount of the temporary note issue, the construction bond, is a little over three million dollars, three million thirty thousand. And that number will change based upon, if obviously if your estimates are any, are revised or anything, are any different than what they currently are in the next couple of months. And I, I believe we should know on East Maine probably within the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
Couple of weeks, I'm just firming up those numbers. So once we have firmer estimates on the East Maine project, we'll be updating these numbers accordingly. And you'll likely have them for your meeting, updated numbers for your meeting on December or September. So you can actually see kind of where our estimated par amount of that temporary note issue will be. Right now, just from the standpoint of, from timing, it, it sounds like probably money, we're probably.
First by Bob Richards and seconded by Matt Oddie. We accept the Resolution Twenty-fourteen dash nineteen, notes of public hearing, streets of grievance in North Campus. Mandy, would you take a roll call? Vote, please.
Richard.
Yes.
Gingler.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yep.
Oddie.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Moving on to formal action. Karen Ludeman. Any comment or any questions?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the lower bid from Karen Ludeman, the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars.
Seconded. It's been moved by Matt Oddie. We accept the bid from Karen Ludeman, and I seconded. Mandy, would you do a roll call vote, please?
You can do yays and nays.
Just on order there, you can't second it. You're chairing the meeting, so you can't. You can't motion or second.
I will.
Yeah, he did that.
Okay, he did that. You can still vote, but you can't. You can't motion or second. All right. So make that, before you went too far.
Okay. Lloyd seconded. Mandy, would you offer a roll call vote, please?
I can, but we normally do yays and nays. Is that okay with you, or?
I'd rather go the roll call the rest of the way.
All right. Let's see. Luttrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Gingler.
Yes.
Oddie.
Yes.
Brown.
Yep.
Miller.
Yes.
Moving on, we're going to the coal replacement in Hale Garden bid. Royal Spring Services for sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Any discussion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Councilman Richards, seconded by Councilman Miller. We accept the bid for Royal Spring Services for sixteen thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Mandy, roll call vote, please.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Gingler.
Yes.
Oddie.
Yes.
Brown.
Yep.
Miller.
Yes.
Moving on to the bid from Miskiess Building and Watson Sons Plumbing for six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Any questions or any comments?
This wasn't that new one, was it, Bill? That we just put up?
Yeah. No, I don't believe it is.
Now, these prices, is that after the insurance or before?
I mean, this is their bid, so...
So we get the insurance.
Right. We already received half the insurance money upfront, and then we get the other half when it stays. And they've already sent us that money.
Yeah.
I move that we accept the bid from Watts for sixty-nine thirty-five.
Moved. Seconded. It's been moved by Tony Gingler, seconded by Matt Oddie. We accept the bid from Watson Sons Plumbing for six thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Mandy, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Richard.
Yes.
Gingler.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Brown.
Yep.
Oddie.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Moving forward, we get masonry bid. Sworshay. Sworshay favor. Representative to City Council approved the masonry bid for Central Contract, an amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Nope. That was this.
This is part of that grant, right?
Yes, this is all the downtown improvement grant. Remember, we had the windows on the first part, and this is the second part. This is the masonry that goes along with it. So it's all grant money, but the mansion is by the local businesses who own a building or are involved in that. So there's no actual...
Seconded. It's been moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Richard. We accept the bid of forty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars for the masonry bid.
Before we go on, a question. Is this the bid from Central Contract in line with what the grant applicants want? Or is this our decision?
Yes, I mean, this is what you... They have actually a committee that meets and recommends just like the...
It was written.
So it's their... Yeah, so that's their recommendation to us, and I believe it meets all your specs and everything, so... Mandy has those in her office, but it perfectly meets what needs to be done, so...
Mandy, a roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Yep.
Gingler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Oddie.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Moving forward, we're going to... Representative to Council approved the engineering agreement with Swobene for preparing plans for East Main and North Campus streets in an amount of to not exceed two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Any comments, any discussion?
The only correction on that is Stuart's already has a contract on the North Campus, and he's still working on it. So this actually will just be all East Main Street, what he's looking at here.
The whole two hundred and thirty thousand?
Correct. That's for both the engineering and the construction observation and construction engineering. So it really has nothing to do with North Campus.
That's going to keep us in line with the total amount we discussed.
Right, the estimate that he provided, I think, two meetings ago...
Those, the numbers are directly off of the cost estimates that have been prepared and adjusted. There's been one revision to that cost estimate, but the most recent cost estimate that you have reflects the numbers that are part of that agreement.
Okay.
No comments, questions?
When were we planning on going forward with this? Was it next year or... I missed the meeting where we talked.
I thought it was next year.
Twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Fifteen, I didn't work.
Well, I guess the timeline would be once we approve this, then you go to work and then get bid documents and do your usual work on this.
The design will take roughly nine months to put together, and then we would advertise like we normally do, and construction... You know, we will talk to the city about the timing of construction, but probably a four- or five-month construction period, something along those lines. We have not put firm numbers to the construction timeline. But realistically, construction would take place in late two thousand and fifteen and/or early two thousand and sixteen.
Probably at best, like a September, October start.
At best, that's correct.
I got a question. I remember talking about this a year ago, and I thought we was going to move forward and do something in two thousand and fifteen. A year ago.
Well, we're moving into design with this agreement.
Well, I thought that was already done a year ago.
That was just the cost estimate.
That's correct.
That's what we discussed, yeah. We had to do a projected estimate of cost on, it was just East Main.
Correct.
I move that we approve the engineering agreement with Swobene.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion, uh... First by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Richard. We accept the bid, not exceed, of two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars from Swobene. Oh, Mandy, roll call vote, please.
Brown.
Yep.
Gingler.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Oddie.
Yes.
Luttrell.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Moving forward, we're going to... Representative to Council approved the attached financial services agreement with Piper Jaffrey and company for providing financial services for issuing general obligation bonds and temporary notes. Any additional discussion?
Question, I guess. It's a little bit confusing here. The financing will be for both projects. I mean, we keep saying both in here, but we back off to either the one or the other. So I would just like to know, but... Yeah, we're confusing two projects, I think, a lot, so we kind of need to clear that. And the other part that's a little bit more complicated is that, well, Dustin's here tonight. He can probably explain this a little better than I can. For those who don't know, Dustin Avery is here from Piper, representing Piper Jaffray. And he's recommending a little different financing here. We go with the temporary notes, if you haven't dealt with that before. And the reason is because we don't know exactly. We do have cost estimates. We don't know exactly if we can bid the projects, yet we don't know exactly what they're going to cost. So what Dustin is proposing to do, temporary financing, it would be a one year or...
Yeah, so...
A year for the temporary. And then once that project's over, then you do the permanent, long-term financing on that. So we are talking about both projects here. And he would be serving as financial advisor on both of those.
On both of them, like just one note?
Uh, no, I don't know how you would ask. I think it's actually...
Notes and the bonds.
Okay, all right.
Right, so it's, if it's helpful, I can just kind of walk through kind of the plan, I want to answer the process, so that's helpful.
So you got something to hand out, too, so...
Yeah. May help kind of put all this together in terms of process and financing plan, et cetera. Well, appreciate being here again. I know it's been a year or so since we talked to the council. Dustin Avery with Piper Jaffray. And I, so I think that the financing plan, it gets related to kind of, well, two projects, right? East Main project as well as the North Campus project. The North Campus project, a portion of that project is going to be special assessed to the properties benefited by the improvements. And the other portion of the project is going to be paid for by city at large. So I think the key is that you have construction estimates. You really don't know your final, obviously, final project cost until you've completed your construction of those improvements, which will probably be the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, is what it sounds. And so what typically cities do is they'll do what's called general obligation temporary notes, which is a term for construction financing. We do a temporary note. You have funds for construction. At the conclusion of construction, then you evaluate, are we under budget, are we over budget? And then you go to bonds at that point in time, long-term bonds. And I believe, two meetings ago, the city reviewed various amortization schedules related to financings of projects over a long-term basis. So at that time, you go to long-term bonds, projects that should be special assessed will be special assessed. The projects that are city at large projects will be part of your budgets going forward. So from a planning perspective, these projects from a budgetary matter will impact your, it'll be your two thousand and seventeen budget that's being prepared for two thousand and sixteen is the first budget you'll be working with and making sure you're budgeting appropriate dollars, either be a property tax or sales tax for repayment of the bonds for these projects. So I think that, from a timing perspective, is that... Answers some of those questions with respect to the construction financing and the bonds. And the pack you have in front of you is really just some of the numbers, and again, I think these are fairly prudent, or I know that there's some estimates related to the North Campus project. And I believe costs are almost firm on East Main, but there may be some other items that are being reviewed in terms of right-of-way costs, et cetera. And so what these numbers show, share with you is, okay, if you're doing a temporary bond issue, it'll be really the second page of that analysis. You'll see what's called sources and uses of funds. So you can see there's the project fund, under the uses section, you have a project fund deposits. And so right now, the estimated cost for North Campus is right around two million, two thirty. The estimated cost for East Main project is one point seven million. Now, so you have various costs related to issuing the temporary notes. We're also capitalizing the interest payments, so obviously during construction, you don't want to have, you're not budgeting for any interest payments over construction. So within the temporary note, we're capitalizing the interest payments to make sure there's no budgetary impact to the city or the construction of the projects. So at this point in time, to fund the projects and to pay the cost of issuance of the temporary notes, the estimated par amount of the temporary note issue, the construction bond, is a little over three million dollars, three million thirty thousand. And that number will change based upon, if obviously if your estimates are any, are revised or anything, are any different than what they currently are in the next couple of months. And I believe we should know on East Main probably within the next couple of weeks. Couple of weeks, I'm just firming up those numbers. So once we have firmer estimates on the East Main project, we'll be updating these numbers accordingly. And you'll likely have them for your meeting, updated numbers for your meeting on December second. So you can actually see kind of what our estimated par amount of that temporary note issue will be. Right now, just from the standpoint of, from timing, it sounds like probably money, we're probably kind of planning on doing this so that money will be available by the end of March, middle to the end of March, which sounds like a timing. I think East Main is the project that's going to be starting first, if I recall. Or no, no, North Campus first, North Campus first, followed by East Main. And so money will be available towards the middle of March, obviously to begin paying construction bills related to those particular projects. There's a couple procedural matters related to both projects, and so that very last page of this packet just really kind of walks through a calendar events. And as you can see, and as you, what you actually already did, was you adopted a resolution calling for a public hearing related to the North Campus projects. At your December second meeting, there's a number of other acts required by the council that evening, obviously one of them being...